I'm gonna call this the regular meeting called the quarter. I need a roll call, please. Again, this is the meeting that's supposed to start at 7:00 p.m. It's now 8:10.
Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Cantello-Zilman.
Here.
Cantello-Zilman, here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here. Clinker.
Here.
Clinker, here. Alexander.
Here.
Alexander, here. Johnson. Johnson absent. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, here. Casadis.
Here.
Casadis, here. Rita.
Here.
Rita, here. Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here. Holly.
Here.
Holly, here. Farrenwald.
Here.
Farrenwald, here. Hill.
Here.
Hill, here. Meck.
Here.
Meck, here. Thirteen, your honor.
Thank you. Now, the presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the city council meeting for the date of May 14th, 2019. We have a motion by Slattery, second by Carr. Any questions? Roll call.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello-Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello-Zilman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita.
Epstein.
Rita, Epstein. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Twelve ayes and one abstention, your honor.
Thank you very much. Alderman, did you, uh, take me downstairs right there? Right hand, raise your right hand, so we can repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Nancy Rita.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of Alderman.
To the office of Alderman.
In the city of Blue Island.
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Alderman.
Of Alderman.
According.
According.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, I need Mike Quickney and Joseph Carr. Are they both here? Here we go. Come on in. Want you to bring, uh, bring her up. And you might as well bring her over from down. We'll go one by one. You know what? Once you use, we'll have you stand this way. Is that good? And we're gonna go with you first.
Okay.
Stand. And now. That?
Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Want you to stand alongside of him. Certainly, we need you to raise your right hand, and you're gonna repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Joseph Cook.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office.
To the office.
A firefighter.
A firefighter.
For the city of Blue Island.
For the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
In the city of Blue Island.
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
In the city of Blue Island.
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
In the city of Blue Island.
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir. We saw the drive run, so you know. I state your name.
Aye, Mike Quickney.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of firefighter.
To the office of firefighter.
In the city of Blue Island.
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
In the city of Blue Island.
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
In the city of Blue Island.
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You have a seat in the back of your life.
Thank you.
I'll open it up to public comment.
Hello again. Uh, just one quick comment before I go home and go to my kids' bed. Um, the Blue Island City website is really out of date. It's full of dead links. It's full, uh, uh, it makes it very difficult to find information when you're trying to do research. Uh, I just wanted to point that out and encourage you guys to do something about that. Additionally, I think the last minutes that were posted from the city council were from like January 8th, which again makes it difficult to do research. I know that YouTube provides video, but I'd rather read the book than watch the movie. So, um, if you guys can take care of that, that'd be awesome. Thanks.
And the sound system.
And. Let me play it for you. Sure. Thank you so much.
Carol DePace, Green, Blue Island. As all of you heard, there was an Open Meetings Act violation. The proceedings tonight for the special meeting should have been published for 10 days in advance. There should have been a public hearing. There wasn't. Certainly, uh, we went through the motion. And I'm confident that you understand, Ms. Alexander, Mr. Bellato, uh, excuse me, Alderman Alexander, Alderman Bellato, Alderman Sagars?
Correct.
Am I confidence? Thank you. Alderman Rita, Alderman Donahue, Alderman Holly, Alderman Farrenwald, Alderman Ringo Hill, Alderman Meck, Alderman Carr, Alderman Cantello-Zilman, Alderman Slattery, and Alderman Clinker. Yes, you will probably be called to answer questions about the Open Meetings Act, uh, Act violation, and I can assure you it will be reported. You're gonna have to work together. Stick to the agenda that you campaigned on. We surface the streets. Work with the state representatives. Get our fair share of the money over here from Cook County, Deborah Sims, and the state representatives. Certainly, Barb Rita does do a good job getting money to repair the streets, and we surface streets where he is. But we've gotta hold Alderman Will Davis, Justin Slaughter. We've gotta hold them accountable, 'cause they're not doing their fair share. They're not doing right by Blue Island. They should never be on anybody's palm card for anything till they deliver. But, yes, you will need legal representation. You, you will be held accountable for your Open Meetings Act violation. This was not a good way to start out. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, let me move on. Report of city officials presenting resolutions. As part of the agenda from the city, I have it as appointments for committees and commissions. I'll read the commissions, committee assignments that I had made. I had drafted the 2019 slash 2021. For municipal services committee, I had put Fred Bellato as chair, Candace Carr, Kevin Donahue, Johnny Ringo Hill, and Nancy Rita. For community development committee, I had put Bill Farrenwald as chair, Annette Alexander, Fred Bellato, Rayanne Cantello-Zilman, Tom Holly, Alicia Slattery, and Mike Meck. For finance committee, I had put Tom Holly as chair, Annette Alexander, William Casades, Bill Farrenwald, Dexter Johnson, and Jim Clinker. For judiciary committee, I had put Alicia Slattery as chair, Candace Carr, Johnny Ringo Hill, Michael Meck, and Nancy Rita. And for public health and safety committee, I had put Dexter Johnson as chair, Rayanne Cantello-Zilman, William Casades, Kevin Donahue, and Jim Clinker. Good. And I'll make a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Tom Holly, second by Alderman Farrenwald. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello-Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello-Zilman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Thirteen ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, need a motion to approve a request from Saint Tenantis Parish to hold their 110th annual feast and carnival starting on Wednesday, August 7th through Sunday, August 11th. Feast day mass will be held at 10:00 a.m. on Sunday, August 11th.
I just got a correction.
What correction?
It's 114th annual. It's probably the secretary, we're using the same letter. It's 114th annual.
Okay.
All right.
Uh... Need a motion.
So you know I come from the cities. We don't prepare in a city hall. I'm not, no, I'm not saying you guys.
Oh, definitely the letter.
Oh, Saint Tenantis, okay. Uh, motion second.
Which was the motion?
Alderman Bellato, and then second by Alderman Donahue. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello-Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello-Zilman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Thirteen ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, need a motion to approve a request from Father Perez, Council Number 1444, to solicit funds for the annual statewide Knights of Columbus Intellectual Disabilities Drive on September 20th and 21st, 2019.
Need a motion by Alderman Rita. Do I have a second by Alderman Clinker? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello-Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello-Zilman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Thirteen ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, need a motion to approve a request from the Blue Island Park District to hold their 4th Annual Dragon Boat Race Festival located at the Number 3 SEPA Station at 2232 Fulton Street on Friday, May 31st, and Saturday, June 1st, 2019. Hours will be Friday from 5:00 p.m. till 8:00 p.m. for practice. Saturday will be from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
There's a motion by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Go ahead.
They're getting permission for this four days before the event? Three days before the event?
I have no idea.
Do they have whatever they need from MWRD?
Supposed to. Want you to ask the Alderman, they might know.
Okay.
Do they have it or not?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello-Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello-Zilman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Thirteen ayes, your honor.
Thank you. Next, need a motion to approve a request from Father Perez, Council Number 1444, to solicit funds for the annual statewide Knights of Columbus Intellectual Disabilities Drive on September 20th and 21st, 2019. Need a motion by Alderman Rita. Do I have a second by Alderman Clinker? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello-Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello-Zilman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Thirteen ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Lastly, need a motion to approve a request from Yolanda and Juan Ortiz. They have a block party on June 8th, 2019 from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. On Hoeyne Avenue from New York Street to 13008 Hoeyne.
Need a motion by Alderman Donahue. Do I have a second by Alderman Rita? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello-Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello-Zilman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Need a motion to approve a request from the Blue Island Park District to hold their fourth annual dragon boat race festival located at the number three SEPA station at 2232 Fulton Street on Friday, May 31st, and Saturday, June 1st, 2019. Hours will be Friday from 5:00 PM till 8:00 PM for practice. Saturday will be from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
There's a motion by Alderman Bolado. Any questions?
So...
Go ahead.
They're getting permission for this four days before the... three days before the announcement?
I have no idea.
Do they have whatever they need from MWRD?
Supposed to. Want to ask the Alderman, they might know.
Okay.
Do they have it or not?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman?
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado?
Aye.
Bolado, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ferrenwald?
Aye.
Ferrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, need a motion to approve a request from the Blue Island Church of Christ to have their annual Vacation Bible School from June 10th to June 14th from 9:30 AM until 2:00 PM.
There's a motion by Alderman Rita, second by Alderman Carr. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman?
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado?
Aye.
Bolado, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ferrenwald?
Aye.
Ferrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, need a motion to approve a request from Saint Tenares Parish to hold their 110th annual feast and carnival starting on Wednesday, August 7th through Sunday, August 11th. Feast day mass will be held at 10:00 AM on Sunday, August 11th.
I've got a correction.
What correction?
It's 114th annual. It's probably the secretary reusing the same letter. It's 114th annual.
Okay.
All right.
Need a motion.
So you know I come from the cities. We don't prepare in the city hall.
No, no, not saying you guys.
Oh.
That's definitely the letter.
Oh, Saint Tenares, okay. Motion second?
Which was the motion?
Alderman Bolado, and then second by Alderman Donahue. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman?
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado?
Aye.
Bolado, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ferrenwald?
Aye.
Ferrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, need a motion to approve a request from Father Perez Council number 1444 to solicit funds for the annual statewide Knights of Columbus Intellectual Disabilities Drive on September 20th and 21st, 2019.
Need a motion by Alderman Rita. Do we have a second by Alderman Klinker? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman?
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado?
Aye.
Bolado, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ferrenwald?
Aye.
Ferrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Lastly, need a motion to approve a request from Yolanda and Juan Ortiz. They have a block party on June 8th, 2019 from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Hoeyne Avenue from York Street to 1308 Hoeyne.
Need a motion by Alderman Donahue. Do we have a second by Alderman Rita? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman?
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado? Bolado, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ferrenwald?
Aye.
Ferrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any bids?
No bids, Your Honor.
City treasurer?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I... the treasurer's business first, and then I... the short discussion of appropriation and the treasurer's report to the new Alderman. I'll discuss that later. First of all, the transfer of funds from restricted non-restricted funds of $126,477.43. Need a motion, please?
We got a motion by Alderman Klinker. Do we have a second by Alderman Hawley? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman?
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado? He stepped out. He stepped out. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ferrenwald?
Aye.
Ferrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next is the payroll from May 17th to 2019 for $351,570.56. Need a motion, please?
Need a motion. Do we have a motion by Alderman Carr? Do we have a second by Alderman Klinker? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman?
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander. Bolado? Bolado stepped out. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ferrenwald?
Aye.
Ferrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And next, accounts payable for May 29th, 2019 for an amount of $495,481.41. Need a motion, please?
Do we have a motion? By Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Hawley. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman?
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado?
Aye.
Bolado, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ferrenwald?
Aye.
Ferrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now, the rest of it is not official business. This is basically, I wanted to inform the council, especially the new council Alderman that has been elected. I gave you a handout of the treasurer's reconciliation statement, the bank statement, which comes out at the end of every month, reconciliation of the bank accounts. And you will get that usually in the first council meeting of the following month. Okay? The main thing, if you could go across the top, gives you the information. Again, to the far right, total fund balance, long-term investment, which is the Illinois Fund, and then also released uncashed checks. Okay? If you run across any other questions, feel free to call myself or Mr. Marzal, Finance Department. Also, just to have your... as of... this Friday, will be another payroll coming up. Once we make that payroll, and the balance in the corporate fund will be approximately $120,000, and then the Illinois Fund approximately $1 million. Now, that will fluctuate because money comes in from property tax, sales tax, all these different things come in. So that comes in every month, and then throughout the month, roughly around $400,000, maybe $450,000 on average, comes in. Okay? Lastly, I gave everyone a handout of the appropriation. The appropriation is by departments, and as you can see on the far right, it says percentage used from the budgeted amount, the current period, year-to-date, and then the remaining balance and used. At the end of May, approximately it should be between 39% to 41%. If it's beyond that, they're over their budget. And Mr. Marzal basically controls that, the day-to-day operation. My concern is, and I've made it very clear before, that the city is not financially in good standings, in my opinion. And I'm not CPA, I'm not an accountant, but I have a lot of experience with finance. And also, if I understand correctly, we had appropriated 3% raises in this appropriation. So if that's already been used up, if we're at 40-some percent or 39% to 37%, that's including the raises, possibly whatever negotiations that were supposed to be already settled that are not. We still have fire, and we still have public works. And Mr. Orvath is doing that. But my concern is that if we already had appropriated the 3%, assuming that this would be already all done, we're accruing expenses every day or every paycheck. Because now that whatever the settlement of these contracts, we'll have to pay retro pay, plus whatever it is. So we're accumulating quite a bit of debt in that respect, besides all the other stuff that has to be paid untimely. And before the end of the month, I'll also be making two loan payments. One for the water bond, and another for the IFA loan bond. Again, if there's any questions at any time, feel free to call the Finance Department, Mr. Marzal, or someone from that office. If you have questions specifically for me, let me know and I'll address them as fast as possible to you with the information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. We have four ordinances on the agenda. First is ordinance number 2019-011. An ordinance of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois in approving an intergovernmental agreement by and among the city of Chicago, the county of Cook, the city of Berwind, the city of Cayman City, the city of Chicago Heights, town of Cicero, village of Dalton, city of Evanston, city of Harvey, village of Maywood, village of Riverdale, village of Skokie, and the city of Blue Island for the fiscal year 2018 Justice Assistant Grant Program Award. Annually, there is a justice assistance grant made. The city of Chicago administers the over $2 million in grant funds. The lion's share of the grant goes to the city in Cook County. The city of Blue Island this year will receive $9,716 for the purchase of three of 13... purchase of in-car camera systems for three of 13 patrol vehicles. Need a motion to approve?
Motion by Alderman Hawley, second by Alderman Klinker. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman?
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado?
Aye.
Bolado, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ferrenwald?
Aye.
Ferrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
The second ordinance is number 2019-012. An ordinance authorizing leasing of certain public property in the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois for use by Club Morelia over 40 soccer team. It's the leasing of the... one of the city's soccer fields for the limited time period from May until... I believe it's the end of September. We're used on evenings... yes, May 17th to September 27th, 27th, 2019, for use on evening hours from 6:00 to 9:00 PM.
Do we have a motion by Alderman Hawley? Do we have a second? Alderman Ferrenwald? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman?
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Pardon me?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Slattery, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
I'm sorry. I did have a question.
Go ahead.
Certain public property, do you have a list of where the property is located?
Yes.
And what would the lease amount be?
The property is... the lease is attached to the ordinance. The property is described as...
119th Division. It's 119th Division.
Yes, 119th Division, the northeast soccer field. And the lease is... yes, the lease is attached to the ordinance. It's the pre-designated field area of the site located west of Division Street and south of 119th Place to be used on every other Friday beginning May 17th and ending September 27th of 2019. It is commonly referred to as Northeast Site Field Number One.
And the lease amount?
Pardon?
What's the lease amount?
$1.
There is a lease amount. It's for $1. It's a community. It's used by a community soccer team.
They use it every year.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado?
Aye.
Bolado, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ferrenwald?
Aye.
Ferrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Here you go, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
The next is ordinance number 2019-013. An ordinance rescinding handicap parking restrictions at 2033 High Street and 2849 Minnesota Avenue in the city of Blue Island, county of Cook, and state of Illinois.
Need a motion by Alderman Slattery, second by Alderman Donahue. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman?
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado?
Aye.
Bolado, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ferrenwald?
Aye.
Ferrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck?
Aye.
Meck, aye. Var... oh, excuse me. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
And item number four is ordinance number 2019-014. An ordinance designate a 13018 Maple Avenue as an historic landmark.
Do we have a motion by Alderman Slattery, second by Alderman Bolado? Any questions? Roll... go ahead.
Just a clarification. This is the old Blue Island Women's Club house, now the Blue Island Historical Society house. It's owned by the Blue Island Historical Society. It was donated in the 40s to the Blue Island Women's Club, and when they pulled it, they donated it to the Blue Island Historical Society. There's a current plaque in front of it, but it was never actually went through the process of the store. We have a committee called Historic Preservation, and you have to apply it to the landmark status. It seems like it fell through the cracks, and we're rectifying that now. Normally, this would go through a bunch of committees. If there is an issue with an Alderman, I think they can bring it up under their question, but we all assume it's been a historic landmark for years because the plaque sits there. But it's the Historical Society house on Maple Street, on the same block as the Healthcare Center.
Any questions? Roll call.
Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman?
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander. Bolado? Bolado, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?